Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM in Oregon's address. Let's go ahead and declare this meeting of the State and City Council on session August 6th. Let's have a flag salute. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening again with a good crowd. This is another chance to remind all of us and remember all of us what that word indivisible means, not able to be divided. And we ought to keep that in mind as we deliberate and sort out our communities concerned. So, roll call, staff introductions. We have, Councilor Moen is not here this evening. The staff is present. Are there any additions to the agenda? Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, general hatred, you know, anything negative? Okay. Presentations, comments from the public, employee recognition of, recognition for years of service. Mr. Campbell, if he would please. And then we'll get to the comments from the public. Keith, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's my privilege tonight to do a service recognition for employees who have been with the city for five, 10, 15, 20, or 25 years. Tonight, we have five recognized employees, all have served at least 10 years. We have several of them here in the audience, so when I get to them, I'll invite them to come up here while we chat about them. First, I'd like to talk about Mike Brash. Mike Brash is in recognition of 10 years of service with the city of Staton, has served several roles with the city. And for some employees, this recognition isn't necessarily what they are interested in, and Mike is one of those people. So, I just want to say, Mike had served 30 years with the city of Albany and now 10 years with the city of Staton, and I appreciate his service. So, can you all give me a round of applause for Mike Brash?
Is Mike here?
Mike is, Mike is not here. He's, he's not one that wants public recognition. Officer Dean Butler is celebrating 10 years with the city of Staton. Officer Butler has been a patrol officer, a field training officer, a reserve coordinator, firearms instructor, a use of force instructor, cadet advisor, and currently serves as our student resource officer. He's part of the National Association of School Resource Officers and the Oregon School Resource Officers Association. In 2011, Officer Butler was recognized as the Officer of the Year for the city of Staton. He has a wife, Lisa, a daughter Haley, and a son, Jordan, and when he's not at work, he enjoys spending time with his family, working in the yard, and fishing. Can you please all give a round of applause for 10 years for Officer Dean Butler? Joe Gesick. Joe, you want to come on up? Joe is celebrating 10 years with the city of Staton. He is a wastewater treatment facilities operator. Prior to this, he served the city of Salem and the city of...
Tascadero.
California. Thank you. He has a degree from the Sacramento State Wastewater Program. He's an industrial electrician certification, and Air Force Crew Technical Mechanic Trainer. Is that correct?
Yeah.
He has a wife, Wendy, his sons, John and Andrew, and when he's not at work, he enjoys drawing, sculpting, and coaching his son in sports. Please give a round of applause for Joe Gesick for 10 years of service. Jackie Schumacher is celebrating 10 years with the city of Staton as the library assistant. She has served on the Safety Committee and the PIM Circulation Committee. She is a University of Oregon graduate with a BA in History, and I need to say, "Go Ducks." She has a husband, Doug, a daughter, Heather. Jeremy and Scott are her sons. Tristan, Mason, Adrian, Raymond, Evander, Jackson are her grandkids, and Toby, Rocky, and Buddy are her grand dogs. When she's not at work, she enjoys reading. I will say, recently, we did a competition of a book list, and I think Jackie handily won in the city. And she enjoys quilting and road trip trips. Please help me congratulate Jackie on 10 years of service. Kendall Smith is celebrating 20 years with the city of Staton as a utility operator in the Public Works Department. He has served on the Safety Committee, and he has a Water Treatment and Distribution Level 2, a Class B CDL, and a Flagging Certification. His wife, Lori, he has kids Abe, Grace, and Henry, and when he's not at work, he enjoys hunting, fishing, camping, and gardening. He is a member of the Knights of Columbus, a groundskeeper at St. Bernard's in Syo, and he enjoys working hard to make things better for the residents of the city of Staton. Please give a warm welcome and congratulations on 20 years for Kendall Smith. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. And now, comments from the public, and I'll take these kind of in the order they came in. So, Steve, you're up first. Steve Poyzon.
Hi. My name is Steve Poyzon, and I live at 1750 East Pine Street in Staton. I am here as the Vice President of Revitalized Downtown Staton. I am here because I've become aware that there is significant negative information circulating about our organization, particularly within the city government, as well as regarding ordinances that we have been involved with. I received an email from Keith this afternoon that stated, and I quote, "I had a long talk with Sherri with Main Street. I expect she will be reaching out if she hasn't already." Later this afternoon, I received an email from Katie Henry at Main Street, just as Keith had predicted. It read as follows. "Hello, Keith and Dan. I wanted to follow up on the matter you discussed with Sherri and I on Friday. Sherri was able to connect with Revitalized Downtown Staton and inquire on the matter of the ordinances. While we do not necessarily encourage younger organizations to take on ordinances so early on, we have determined that Revitalized Downtown Staton followed what we would have suggested they do when building community support around ordinance changes. Oregon Main Street is still fully in support of Revitalized Downtown Staton, and we look forward to working with the organization and looking to the results of the Main Street Refresh Report to help guide their progress forward. Sherri Stewart will be out of the office for the next two weeks, but if you have questions or concerns, do not hesitate to contact me," and she left her number and email. "While this doesn't tell the whole story behind the details in between, let me just say there are some miscommunications that have occurred. I believe a solution to this problem may be found in the same email from Keith," which ended with the sentence, and I quote, "I think RDS, the city, and Main Street should get together and talk about how to be successful." End quote. "RDS would encourage such a meeting, and we are willing to participate as soon as it can be arranged. We hope that the city manager, as well as the mayor and the council members, are also willing to attend such a meeting. I ask that the council suspend any action regarding our organization or any of the ordinances we have been involved with until such a meeting can take place. We believe direct communication between all parties is the best way to reach a mutual understanding that works best in serving the community, the citizens of our community." Thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
As a personal favor, would you go over that last part again? Not the last words, but that whole business of suspension of ordinances, please.
"I ask that the council suspend any action regarding our organization or any of the ordinances that we have been involved with until such a meeting can take place." Is that the part?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I have copies of Katie Henry's email, if anybody would like to see it.
Most of the council hasn't seen this. Most of the council has not seen it, sir. Keith, is that kosher to...
I can't say who in the council has seen it or not. He read the email, I think.
I did, but I have copies if you'd like them.
No, I've, I've seen it. You've seen it.
We'll take a copy. Do you have a copy?
Couple of people would like copies. Just give all this stuff to Councilor Crone, please, to pass them out. Samantha. Steve, you're done. Okay. Samantha Jones, please.
Good evening, Council. I've written a letter that I'd like to read to you all, and then I'd like to give it to you for your consideration. City Council, outside smoking is not a health and safety issue. Since the popularity of smoking bans skyrocketed almost a decade ago, there have been multiple studies in different cities and countries around the world, and they have all come to the same conclusion. Banning outside smoking has no effect on the health of non-smokers. Transient exposure to secondhand smoke is nothing more than an annoyance rather than a moral threat. The ban implemented here in town adversely affects businesses, the bars specifically. With 90% of our bar customers being smokers and having nowhere to smoke legally, there will be a significant impact on the profit margins of these businesses. The employees will no longer be able to take their smoke breaks. A drop in morale will occur. The workplace will suffer. If these businesses cannot provide the atmosphere desired by their customers, revenue decreases and businesses go under. There will be job losses and tax revenues lost as well. This new ordinance is only targeted at small area in the city of Staton. Is there a specific reason for it other than secondhand smoke? Not allowing citizens to smoke as usual in the community is taking away our freedoms. In addition, it is not fair for the businesses that are impacted negatively due to this new ordinance. The ban goes beyond the goal of protecting unwilling bystanders from secondhand smoke. It is intrusive to the rights and preferences of smokers and business owners. The blatant disregard for self-ownership is evident by this council's actions in voting this into place, with no input from the community that it's supposed to represent. We would like this ban to be put back on the ballot for a revote and allow the community to voice its own opposition to it.
Thank you. That's, that's well written. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick question.
Obviously, you know, you already know that you and I don't, we don't care.
You can ask.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a quick question, please, sir?
Oh, okay. Counselor.
I am a non-smoker. I smoked one cigarette in college. Keith, or Chief, or Hank, I know we banned smoking in the front of the buildings. Is there nowhere to smoke legally downtown?
In the back of our building, next to trash and gas lines in a public thoroughfare is our only option. Steve came and saw me, and out there, we cannot legally put an overhang to protect them from inclement weather, so no, there's nowhere.
Thank you. I was looking for clarification.
Okay.
Please go up and state.
One of the time up there. Okay. More? Samantha?
No, I'm open for questions.
Okay. Questions for the lady? Questions for her?
Regarding...
Well, please, please, sir. Wait, wait, let me do this, please. Just hold off until you're...
Mr. Mayor.
I've got a list of names that I'm going to call the people that want to speak.
Along with this letter that I've provided you, Mickey Moms has provided 135 signatures. The Moose Lodge has provided 19, and that, that's just to start, because the other businesses are here to represent their self. And I'm to understand that this is an election year, and this is a year where we can make a difference. We're a government for the people, by the people, and that's the way it should be, not personal agendas.
Thank you.
Usually Samantha, but not tonight, somebody's usually here that likes to go out in the back with people and explain what, what my personal agenda is.
Mr. Mayor, just like that person, I'm not going to get involved with that.
Good for you. Good for you. Thank you. Uh, let's see.
Good evening. My name is James McGraw. I wish to continue the discussion about anti-smoking ordinance number 1019, which is titled Maintenance of Building and Public Spaces. Section 2.5, Smoking Prohibitive, Chapter 1. I want to give you just a little background, might help you understand where I'm coming from. I'm a disabled vet. I only hear 40% of what you hear. But when I was in the military back in the 60s, this is weird, because back when we were out in the field, we got C rations, now they call me Rations, whatever. But then those C rations, US government gave me a little pack cigarettes. Five cigarettes. Chesterfields, Lucky Strikes, Bill of War. It was luck of the draw, where they get Hammond Brothers or whatever. The US government gave me cigarettes. Okay? When we was in the military, what do we do? We're defending democracy all over the world. What is democracy? It's freedom of the people, by the people. That's what democracy is. Not to be dictated by the few. I've lived here for, what, 35 years? I'm a registered voter. I voted every time there was something to vote to in state. It's never been there for us to choose. By the people. Not dictated by the few. It was discussed like this was supposed to be something under the umbrella of friends of downtown State. I'm a friend of downtown State. Mark can tell you, I'm down there every damn day. I know more about Third Street than anybody does. Do any of you know where the Pioneer Ronda Booth alone is?
Used to be rumors.
It's way broad back.
James, thank you for your courage.
I don't...
Save the grant.
South Florida to me, that's...
Save it, please. Uh, we've got somebody that wants to get in this, and I'm asking him not to.
I cannot hear, sir.
That's fine. You're doing fine.
Let me finish my statement, and then...
Okay.
But anyway, please repeal this cock and maney or section of this ordinance, and put it up to the people. Okay? Put it up to the people, and not to be dictated by the few. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for your service to the city.
James. Thank you, James. Mr. Mayor.
I'd just want to say thank you again for having the courage to speak.
Say that, please. Okay. Timothy Keaton. I didn't get Tom Peterson, but we'll get him next.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Tim Keaton. I live at 1553 Front Ridge. First off, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you today. I come here as a representative of the owners, the staff, and patrons of Rumors. I come here as a representative of the owners, the staff, and the patrons of Rumors at 282 North Third Street, downtown State.
Excuse me, one more time. Would you speak into that machine? There you go. Thank you.
I am here as a representative...
Put your mouth on the microphone. Hank can't, Hank can't, Hank really can't hear you.
Counselor, please, save it.
If I speak loud enough, you can hear me. Yes?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I am here as a representative of the owners, the staff, and the patrons of Rumors. We support Samantha Jones and her opposition of the recent amendments to ordinance 1019. We just want you to know that there are other businesses in the downtown area that support her agenda right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Timothy.
My name is Tom. My name is Tom Peterson. I live at 2190 Cardinal Avenue, and I just have a couple of questions for the city council. The huge perk pond that you're putting in on Kendall, I would like to know, how are you guys going to control the mosquito population, for one? The drainage ditch that's going to run long Kendall Way, how are you going to keep the kids from falling in and something happen? You know, it's bad enough that we have a huge amount of dust and noise that we're putting up with, but are we going to have to increase our mosquito population? And what about the Zika virus? And last of all, all this water, this, that this perk pond is going to produce, what about the chemicals and the oils and the, that it bleaches into the ground? And all the farmers around, and it contaminates the ground. That's all I have. If you could answer those questions, I'd be more than happy. Thank you.
I don't know, but I want to try. It seems like it's, it's just rainwater, but Lance, would you try that?
I'll give this a go. First off, I apologize that if you have any dust in your house, we've been doing, trying to do a very good job of having water trucks water that site. Numerous, it's going nonstop. I think if you live out there, you see the water tank that's suspended above the road, that thing's going full-time while they're there. We have had one to two trucks running at all times to try to keep the dust down. I apologize if you have any dust in your home. I come out, I go out there several times a day. I haven't seen it where the dust has actually been pluming up into your neighborhood, but if it has, I apologize, and we'll do what we can to keep that down. Most of the excavation is over with. You, we won't be excavating that pond any further. Regarding the mosquitoes, mosquitoes tend to grow in the spring and summertime, mainly the summertime. That's when they come out and populate. Well, in the summertime, that would be a park. That'll probably only be used for storm water in the wintertime, which we have, we will not have a mosquito population out there. So, it's not going to be filled with water all the time. It's only going to be, have water going during large storm events, and I don't foresee any mosquitoes being in there, to be quite honest. There'll be a park in the summertime. You'll be able to walk across the street, and it'll be a nice grass park, so you can go out and play frisbee, or throw the ball for your dog, or whatever.
All those chemicals that are made from the earth and stuff that can put on the grass, kids play on, kick the soccer and all that.
I can show you detention ponds, very similar to this, throughout the state of Oregon, probably the United States of America. People, they're dual-purpose ponds, just like that. The oils will be caught in manholes prior to even entering that swale. The oils and the fats, most of the heavy metals will drop out before it even enters the swale, or the ditch you call it. They'll be out of there. And what is left will be caught in the swale coming down to the pond.
It's rainwater.
And it is just rainwater. The only kind of chemicals you're going to be getting are from overland flow off the streets, so the pavements, things like that, which is one of the reasons we try to go out and educate the public to try to keep their pesticides, their oils, their other kinds of chemicals off the road, and clean them up in their yards and things like that, is to prevent that from happening. But we have built redundancy into the system with two manholes, large, deep, 84-inch diameter manholes, that are four and a half foot sumped to catch all those oils and grits prior to even entering that grass swale. So, there are redundancies built inside. I feel confident, as a registered civil engineer, who's done this for 25 years, I have a city engineer that's been doing this for 25 years and designing just these very such detention ponds, and we hired a consultant on the outside that's been designing these things throughout the Oregon, Idaho, Washington area for the last 30 years. We feel pretty confident with what we've designed, and that's what I can, that's what I can tell you.
Lance, there, there are biofilter swales out there to catch the stuff even before it gets to the manholes, right?
That is, it's basically a swale from the time it leaves Shaft Road to the time it enters the, the pond. It's probably 900 feet long, which is probably, I don't know, 15 times the size it actually needs to be.
A giant organic filter that captures all the stuff, right?
It helps.
Okay. All right. We're good. Thank you, Tom. Yeah. That's, that's going to be a, a good project on the fringe of the community. There not going to be a lot of oil and grease and dead animals and whatnot in it. I hope that doesn't get in the paper. Penny Hall.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I am here on the smoking ban, and I represent the Red Apple. I have a letter written here, but from listening to the conversations, I'm not going to read it. I will hand it in. The smokers that are outside these businesses smoking were banned by a non-smoking law that was passed several years back, and now they're being targeted again. The owners of Cheers is also here, so I'm going to speak for them also.
Penny, would, would you tell us one, one more time, who you are and where you're from?
I am Penny Hall. I am the bar manager for the Red Apple Restaurant and Lounge at 333 North Second Avenue.
Okay. Where do you live, ma'am?
I live at, in Syo.
Okay. Well, that's all right. They're just, what, 40223?
Staton Syo Road.
Syo Road?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, please.
I've been there my whole life. But smokers and non-smokers are never going to agree with each other, and that's obvious, and as adults, we all know that. But I really do believe that the smokers' rights have been stomped on enough by the non-smokers, when this really, like, was stated previously, is not a health issue. The original non-smoking ban was done under the guise of employee safety. Me, as an adult, had the choice to go to work in a smoking bar if I chose to. As a non-smoker, either way. I do appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us, and I really do hope that it has not fallen on deaf ears, because this is a critical issue which could also affect revenue, job losses, and a domino effect, because wedging revenue, smokers support these businesses far more than non-smokers. And I do not mean that as a derogatory statement. It is just the truth. So, let's give our smokers some of the rights that they deserve, that will help the businesses, and it will also help the city of Staton, and it will help the job corps. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else on that issue? That's the end of my green slips. Anyone else on that issue this evening? Anyone else on that issue this evening?
I have a green slip.
Well, get up there, please. And then the gentleman in the back who tried earlier.
My name is Chris Waters, owner of Cheers on First. My address is 40218 Colview Drive, Syle. I just wanted to address the little, the question. You said something about outside smoking and back areas. Cheers has none. All of our smokers smoke out front. And I kind of felt like, maybe it wasn't a health issue, the thing I was getting from it was, you know, that it looks bad, I guess, is kind of, is that, no? Was it a health issue is why you guys are putting it through, or? What is the reasoning for it, I guess I should say?
Oh, it looks bad, health issue.
I can say what I thought.
Do that, please.
Okay. There was apparently, according to what I was heard, a survey done of people in the community, and people in the community ask that it not happen. That's, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's what I understood.
Why is it only from First Avenue to Third Avenue? Why isn't the bottle factory, brewskies, Wolfgang's?
This is the information we were presented with.
Let her talk. Let...
So, that's all I wanted to say, is our people don't have any place else to go. And I do keep our area clean out front. I have ashtrays, we sweep out there every day. So as far as it looking bad, that's not Cheers, because we do keep it clean out there. So, again, and I agree with what everybody else said, our revenue will go down. It will hurt our business tremendously.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I support what Counselor Gladwell just said, isn't that, that's what we were presented with. And we appreciate the heck out of everybody out there, and there's a lot of people out there tonight, and your opinions, because you are opening our eyes to another view. I am a non-smoker.
I'm a non-smoker also. I just wanted to say.
We didn't get to hear Counselor Cronquist tell, he didn't inhale either when he did smoke that one cigarette.
It was a Carlton Light menthol, and I swore that if I ever had kids, I would buy them a pack of Carlton Light menthols.
I guess that's about all I have to say, just, yeah, I hope you do revisit this issue and take it off the board.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Chris, were you guys, were you guys ever in contact with or approached by the downtown group that put this ordinance before us?
No, we were not.
So, it looks like there's a lot of shaking of the head there. The vote was not unanimous, as you guys may or may not know.
Okay.
And I voted no, simply because of the same thing you guys are experiencing today. I didn't believe that the community was coming together in one general consensus. So maybe what we should do is turn the chairs around right now and have a five-minute discussion about how we can fix this together, if that's what the RDS folks really want to do.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Someone else, please. Tell us who you are and where you live, please.
I'm Bob Johnson. I live at 850 Third Street in Staton. Got that? Okay. I am a veteran, I'm a non-smoker, and I don't drink. But I think what you guys are doing is terrible. Why would you pick on the smokers? My brother in 11 died of lung cancer from smoking. I was with him all the time. I don't have it. So, all your stuff, and also, too, you say on a survey that was sent around. I got no survey. I got no vote. So what happened there? Didn't they have enough to go around to all of us? No, you guys are just, like you said, you smoked one cigarette. Well, I used to smoke a long time ago. I quit smoking because I wanted to, not because someone made me do it. I have the right. I fought for this country, and I fought for the rights for everybody in this country. And for speaking on just smokers, I mean, smoking built most of our highways and stuff here in the world. I mean, how can you guys sit and condemn smoking if it's outside where it's doing no harm to nobody else, period? Thank you very much.
Get in on everything, please. Come on up and...
My name's Bill Agee.
Let's, let's...
I'm a member and officer of the State and Moose Lodge.
Okay, and your address, sir?
I live at A 64 North Third Street here in Staton. And I understand with this new smoking ban, it affects a lot of the businesses, which I'm all in support of the businesses that have come forth. It also affects several apartment buildings here in town that do not allow smoking inside their units, which means smokers have to go out on the sidewalks, go out in parking lots, be able to smoke. I fall under that umbrella. Now, I don't feel I should have to walk a quarter mile down the road to be able to smoke a cigarette. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
If you would, sir.
Counselor Cronquist.
Apologize for listening to a survey and not listening to constituents, and I commend Counselor Quigley on his vote.
Sure.
Okay. Can I also say something?
Listen to this one, then. And then Counselor Key will probably want to get in on that, and we'll go on and on. Go ahead, please. Tell us...
I'm Mark Waters. I'm also the owner of Cheers with my wife Christine. I live at the same address, 40218 Colview Drive in Syle. She didn't touch on one thing. I wanted to let you know, there are eight bars in Staton. There are four of them under this blanket, the zone that you guys have chosen. That will be a windfall for them, and it'll be a loss for the four bars under the blanket, just because they will, the customers will seek out elsewhere to go and enjoy themselves and be able to smoke. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Last call. Anyone?
Sounds like we're in a bar.
Okay.
I'd like to say something. So, I actually don't have a problem with smokers. I think I said that the last time I was here. I smoke three packs a day, and I'm actually an ex-smoker that actually still likes the smell of cigarette smoke. So I don't have a problem with smokers. However, I appreciate everybody coming here, but I cannot tell you how many businesses came to me before that ordinance is that are on Third Avenue and complained. So I don't think that it is a closed subject by any means, but I think it is going to be important that we get everybody in the room with everybody's opinion, so we're not, again, like before, just listening to a small group, so that everybody is able to talk and try and work out whatever it needs to happen, so that nobody feels like their rights are being stomped on. So, again, I just want to make sure that this time around, when we get up there again to where we're going to look at whether this is going to happen or not happen, or we're going to keep it or not keep it, that all people have a chance to voice their concerns on both sides of this issue. And so, again, I don't have a, how do you say it, a dog in the race here, as far as I'm concerned. I happen to be personally very, very interested in personal choices and personal rights that we keep those. But again, I want to make sure that people, businesses that don't know that this is being discussed here now, also have an opportunity to do it. So all I'm saying is, is I just think that obviously we need to do a better job of having some inclusion from everyone. And I think that you being here is the start of that, that, okay, let's back up, let's take a look at, you know, what's happening. I don't know what form that will take, but I certainly do want to let you know that I've heard you, and I think the rest of the council has too.
Absolutely. Mr. McGurrie, again. James?
For dogs. If you think back that up with documentation, all these people that complain to you are have to listen, please. The people that I talked to down here, they didn't have a problem, they didn't even know this was coming about. Back up what you say with written documentation, please. I want to know what these people are, where they come from. You're just making this up in your head.
Actually, I'm not, and I would be happy to give you some names. The person that owns the quilt shop has been, has come forward many times about people smoking in front of her shop and it going into their...
James, hold on now.
I don't think so. Anyway, again, I would be willing to share with you who it was, and I'm sure they would be willing to share. But I think that everybody needs to be heard, is all I'm saying.
Samantha, get up there, please, if you would.
James, thank you for everything. When this survey comes about, can it be a matter of public record, and can everybody who's affected by this be involved? Everybody's comments made up front to everybody, because, you know, I'm sitting in a room full of people who feel absolutely disillusioned and let down that this happened. And can we have this ordinance suspended until it happens, until it becomes a fair and well-informed vote? Because it doesn't need to be legal if it's not been voted in legally.
Samantha, just a thought. What do you think would happen if we put this to a community referendum?
Let's find out.
Okay, there's a process for it.
Okay, you tell us what T's to dot, what to cross, and what I's to dot, and we'll be right there. We'll be here every community meeting.
And you would accept the vote?
You bet. But we'll get a partake in it, too.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on that? Okay, let's, yeah, let's leave that for a while, at least tonight, and go to a consent agenda, please.
We approve as soon as we can, sir.
Okay. Which is city council minutes and an ordinance number 1023 amending the state municipal code 5.5 relating to pharmaceutical drug disposal. And we've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I read the last meeting.
I read the last meeting.
I read the last meeting. I approve, I was there at the meeting, we talked about the pharmaceuticals and all those things.
Should be somebody's at the actual meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
We've got a motion to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second, please?
I'll second if I can, because we work here.
The second is just to vote on it, the motion would be submitted.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Would you, I'm going to try something different here. Would you poll the council, please?
Sure.
On these questions?
Sure.
I'm not sure we understand these voting.
It's the disposal of drugs.
Go ahead, come on.
So it's on the consent agenda, just the minutes and the ordinance, 1023. So, Counselor Gladwell? Counselor Quigley? Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Esselman?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, we're good. With that, there are no public hearings tonight. Unfinished business is a request to reopen the hearing, land use file number 5-04/18. Dan, can you take us through this, please?
Certainly. The council may recall that on July 16th, you had a public hearing on a set of comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendments that had been initiated by the Planning Commission. Following that hearing, following the public testimony, you closed the hearing and then deferred any deliberation on the matter until your September 17th meeting. In your packet, you will see an email that came in last Thursday afternoon from Berkshire Hathaway Real Estate Professionals requesting that you reopen the hearing so that they can provide some additional testimony to you. Should you wish tonight to do that, then staff has the time to notice that the hearing will be reopened. Any discussion that you have tonight should be limited to whether to reopen the hearing or not, and not get into the merits of the issue in front of you that you'll be discussing on the 17th. If you choose to reopen the hearing again, we can provide notice, and if not, then you'll just take the matter up on September 17th.
So do we just make the motion to do that?
That's what it would, that's all that would be needed, yep.
Question before us is to, a request to reopen hearing on land use file 5-04-18. What does the council wish to do?
I'd like to make a motion that we reopen the hearing.
Okay, a motion to...
I'll second that, that's fine. That's my question.
And a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Dan, regarding my email to you in terms of the Cliff Notes version, is there any downside to reopening discussion?
If you do so tonight, I don't see any.
Thank you.
But the motion is to simply reopen the hearing?
Correct.
Let's try this one time, because it may not work. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same side? Okay. The next thing, a housing study follow-up. Mr. Fleishman, again, you're on.
Great, thank you. Back in April, you were presented with a report that was essentially a state of the housing situation here in the city. And at that time, we said we'd be back with some ideas for discussion for, ideas for policy discussion. I'm not here tonight with any recommendations for action, but to bring out like four or five different ideas for what the city could do to impact the amount, the type, and the quality of housing in the city. Some highlights from the inventory report that was presented to you back in April. For the most part, Staton is a, the housing stock is relatively new, only 11% of the housing units are more, were built prior to 1950. Staton's housing is primarily single-family. 82% of the housing units in the city are single-family dwellings. Part of the report was a sort of windshield survey, just driving around, looking at housing, assessing its condition, no inspections, no getting out of the car. But only 8% of the housing units were rated to be in average or worse condition during that windshield survey in the fall of 2017. There has not been any multifamily housing built in the city since 2002, and the last one that was built was a four-unit building on Locust Street. In 2017, 18, the median sales price for a single-family home was $225,000. Half of the homes were more expensive than that, half were less expensive than that. My guess is, if we look at current figures, we're probably around $300,000 to $325,000 sales price currently. In June, I brought to you a resolution supporting the application of a housing assistance grant to the state. I'm sad to report that we were not selected to receive that, and that's part of what's, once we got the notice of that, that's what prompted coming forward tonight to get this discussion underway. So I've identified in the memorandum... So I've identified in the memorandum you've got in your packet, a number of issues that you could consider taking action on that would either increase the supply of housing and therefore perhaps affect the cost of housing. That would address the quality of housing and the impact particularly of housing other than single-family homes on the neighborhood and address the affordability of housing. So, one, two, three, three different areas that I've identified here. One of which deals with the supply of land available for residential development in the city. And there's two components of that. One is the amount of vacant land in the city that's zoned for residential, available for development. And the other is the perceived risk of annexing land into the city. As I said earlier, it's been close to 20 years since we've had any multifamily housing constructed in the city. There is one four-unit complex that's been approved by the Planning Commission. They've actually submitted their building permit application. The building permit is ready to be issued. We're just awaiting them to come in and pay the final fees. But that's been, what, about six weeks or so since they've been notified that it's ready and they haven't come forward. There is only one vacant parcel of land in the city that is zoned high-density residential, which is the only residential zone where multifamily housing is permitted.
Is it Second Influenza, the drawed property?
That is the drawed property north of Fern Ridge between Cascade Highway and Third Ave.
Just let him finish without interruption, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a quick, quick...
Well, just, just let him finish.
The...
Please.
You'll recall our discussions a year, year and a half ago about the condition of the apartment complex on Wyatt Ave. While that may have been an outlier in how bad it was, now that our multifamily housing stock is 35 to 45 years old, my impression is a lot of it has received a minimal amount of maintenance, at least the exterior. Who knows what the interiors are like? That there's, there is an apparent shortage of quality rental housing in the city for which there is a strong demand for rental units.
Mr.? Let him finish.
The city's comprehensive plan indicates that most likely an additional 174 multifamily units will be needed by 2030. And that 193 single-family attached and duplexes will be needed. That's just based on the population projection and some assumptions about how the mix of housing may change. And that's actually assuming that we'll see more single-family detached built, that the shift, will continue to shift for more single-family. But still, with that shift, almost over 300, 350 housing units of multifamily duplex or single-family attached will be needed under the comprehensive plan. We've got adopted comprehensive plan policies and action steps to address the supply of housing that encourage development of housing that meets the needs of all income groups, of existing and future residents, and actions that are in the adopted comprehensive plan to implement this policy or to assure that an adequate supply of land in all residential zones, allowing manufactured homes on individual lots with design standards similar to site-built housing, and to allow mobile home parks in the medium-density and high-density zones. And as I said, however, we have only one parcel of land in the city that's zoned high-density residential. It's been on the market for close to two years. And there's been very little interest in it. To my guess is partly because the price is...
Astronomical.
Yeah. I wasn't gonna use that word. I was gonna say quite high. But, but anyway, so, one of, one of the suggestions I have for consideration by the city council is that we initiate a process to evaluate the zoning of vacant residential land in the city and consider zone map amendments that would make more high-density land available.
Okay. Can you take a question at that, at this point?
I will take questions at any time.
What if we decide to go on another, the other way?
Well, that, that would not address the issue of the supply of multifamily housing.
No, it wouldn't.
But that is certainly the prerogative of the...
It wouldn't at all.
...of the council to do.
No, but we've seen, I don't want to get on a soapbox here. I got, there are people here that do that quicker and easier than me. But we've seen two instances in the last year of, of MD zone property, one of them very recently, that created an outcry in the neighboring, in the neighborhoods near them, around them, surrounding them. And it just, it just seems like, attitude-wise, we're moving away from accommodating just anyone in any situation and any economic group that wants to live here. Sounds like I'm encouraging race war, not race war, class war. And I'm not, but it sounds like it. I know it is. Well, it does. It does. It does. Let's make this another sublimity.
Or like Oswego.
Thank you. With single-family homes on 10,000 square-foot lots. Or let's, let's have duplexes that are 17 and 1800 square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bath units. Anyone want to build those? Two-car garages? Landscaping? Stonework?
I think the woman who redeveloped is redeveloping. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You may.
Julie, who's redeveloping.
You may ask a question. Get up close to that microphone so I can...
I, I think, I believe Julie was the woman who took the old houses and made a duplex out of them, right? And that is an adequate and a good solution. I think that...
Those aren't duplexes, they're two houses?
Two houses that are attached with a shared garage and driveway.
Whatever.
I, I think that Dan asks a question in terms of, like, independents where there are five higher-end multifamily complexes of 32 units each going in, or Lebanon where they're a whole bunch. Does that provide an affordability? Our apartments here in this town rent for $944 a month. There is zero vacancy. There are 34 applicants for every single opening in this town. Now, we can become sublimity or like Oswego. That is our choice. And that is our right to do that. However, if we choose the other option, we don't have to build Section 8 housing. And I understand that we have quite a lot of Section 8 housing. And a lot of it's kept up well, and a lot of tenants are great, and I appreciate that. But there were some challenges at the Wyatt property and stuff like that. There, Dan, is there, are you advocating for a middle road? And you know that I will.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
This isn't an actionable item tonight, is it?
No.
No.
Other than to provide direction to staff as to if you want to pursue any of these ideas that we're bringing forward to pursue. So, no, it's not, not, certainly you're not, you won't be changing the zoning map tonight. You'll be saying, yes, you want to consider looking at the zoning map.
No. Ms. O'Leary has to leave soon. She's gotta catch a midnight express to God knows where, but that's all right. That's her business. Our common humanity would say that we back off from these exclusive ideas of, we've got ours and the rest of the world can go fly a kite. People need a place to live. We recognize that. We, we are, hopefully, considerate, compassionate people. But where's that middle ground?
I, I...
Thank you, Dan.
My, my opinion is that we saw, that Staton most likely saw a large amount of construction of multifamily housing in the mid to late 70s to mid to late 80s. And much of it has not been maintained very well since that time. Was not designed, perhaps not designed very well. And certainly, we did not have the code standards that we have in place, land use code as well as building code standards that we have in place now. And that much of it, and even the older stuff even more so, would not be able to be replicated today due to the standards we have for landscaping, design, parking, et cetera. And if constructed, new multifamily housing would provide less of an impact on the neighborhood than what some of the current multifamily has. Particularly if we have developers who are willing to invest in, in maintenance of the property. And that takes having rental income to support maintaining the property.
Go ahead, Brian. You have a question.
Mr. Mayor, another question. I'd be in favor of establishing a Housing and Neighborhood Vitality Commission if the council so desires and they can address the issues that Dan has brought to the forefront here.
Awesome idea. Thank you, Brian. We brought on? We've played with this idea for a while and mostly internally with staff. And this, this may be the time to try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I...
To try to deal with some of these questions.
That's the end of my staff report, but that's an idea the mayor and I have talked about. Actually, when he brought it up a year or so ago, did some research in other communities that have done so. Coming back with an ordinance to establish a commission, it's probably 90% drafted already based on the conversations that I had with the mayor at that time.
Well, it was part of the discussion was a reaction to that Wyatt Street apartment situation. And that was just, that needed to be addressed, and we did, so. But it, yeah, it's a great idea.
So can we just ask the staff to, to make an ordinance and bring it back to the council?
And then, and then you'd have a body to address these issues and come forward to you with, with various recommendations.
Fine, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan.
Easy.
Thank you, Dan. Anything else on that?
That's, that's it.
Okay, let's see, staff presentations, comments. Oh, let's see. City manager Keith, anything this evening?
I'd like to take my time to turn it over to Chief Seabans to discuss tomorrow, so Chief Seabans, will you?
Okay.
Mayor and council, we'd like to remind you and invite you all to come out to the National Night Out event put on by the police department. It's an event that, as you all know, happens across the whole country, where it's a time for police departments to go out and get to know their, the neighbors and for neighbors to get to know each other, which does a lot for preventing crime. If you know who your neighbors are, you know when things are going on that are amiss and are willing to check on each other and help each other out. To the events that the police department puts on here in Staton is we, we go to four different parks. We go to Pioneer Park, Sandy Am Station Park, Eagle Park over near the Bird Streets, and West Town Park. And the officers will be out there barbecuing hamburgers and hot dogs. And we're asking community members to, to bring a store-bought item to participate in the barbecue tomorrow night. It's from, goes from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Chief, I didn't get a response this morning when I asked your staff if they'd consider setting up a neighborhood picnic in, in my neighborhood so they could see the condition of the neighborhood. I was hoping facetiously.
We would, we would love to have you to host one in your neighborhood, and then we'd be happy to stop by. There are several other neighborhoods that, that have small little parties that go on, and we send an officer to those.
You can't do this, you can't do this last...
We were in Westgate last year. It was awesome. Chief, how many people?
I'm going over to Coil Run and, and listen to Slurry Steel stories.
No, I know. I just heard that you were having a party at your house, Mayor. What's the address again? Did you guys hear that the mayor's having a barbecue?
It would, it would not be much of a party because most of the guests would be completely distressed by, by what they see in the area.
Chief, how many hot dogs or hamburgers did you buy last year? Because I'm gonna, see if I can swing a donation for you for, chief, for cookies.
I, I have, actually, I'll top my head. I have no idea.
Paul Park.
We usually have between 100 and 200 people at each park.
So, 800?
Good thing.
Probably.
If I can, I'll drop them by before 1:00.
So.
I went over to Coil Run last year. And we sat there and talked to some groups of people that you don't see. They don't take part in, in this part of the, the community. And I was trying to stir them up a little bit about, and I'll do it again tomorrow night, about getting involved with the city a little more. So, that's, it's, they're friends over there. It's a good place. It's, it's a nice place. So, yeah. You're not gonna be home. We, we used to go down to Pioneer.
Bring your music.
We have, the last few years.
Wonderful park, yeah, so.
I know, I'm gonna miss it this year.
I hope everybody finds a place.
Somebody needs to borrow the same music she had last year.
Okay. Keith, anything, or Chief, folks, whoever, Chief?
Yeah.
Chief, go ahead.
I apologize. I forgot to bring the brochure. But on our social media, on our Facebook page, the Army Corps of Engineers hosting three public events to talk about the Detroit Reservoir Fish Project. And so, this has been something that's been behind the scenes in staff. And I know even the public is becoming aware of, of this project. And so, I would encourage people to contact the city or to get on our Facebook page and, and look at those. And if possible, to attend. Unfortunately, one is tomorrow during National Night Out. But there's two other public events, and I think it's important for the public to understand what's happening and what potential impacts that could have and, and to understand what the city's working on to ensure that as this project continues, that we'll can, we'll be able to provide drinking water to our residents, so.
Mr. Chair, please.
Mr. Mayor, please, sir. May I have permission to talk to the city administrator?
Well, I, before you did, I have the dates here really quick, so let's do that. Tuesday, August 7th from 5:30 to 7:30 at this community center. Wednesday, August 22nd from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Gates Fire Hall. And Thursday, August 23rd from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Commission Room in Salem. So those are the three meeting, meeting times for those.
Since tomorrow is National Night Out, Keith, these are, do you think it'd be who's to put the word out to have the community show up at a non-National Night Out event as a mass of people saying, hey, we want to know what's going on? I appreciate what you've done. I know that the count, the corps has not been forthright with you or us as a city. But if we had 20 or 30 or 50, 100 residents there, you're the expert.
You know, we just want to make the community, the community know of ways they can be involved. National Night Out is a great program. The, the, this is an important, Army Corps of Engineers is an important project as well. There's other opportunities other than tomorrow. I understand Gates and Salem require a little more, more effort. But I think it would be, you know, good for people to decide what's, what's best for them and to make a good choice on, on participating in any or all of those events.
This is gonna sound like editorializing, but we built those dams 50, 60, 100 years ago for several purposes. Flood control.
Drinking water.
Downstream, water supplies, irrigation, recreation. Guess which one's the most important? It's a four-letter word.
Six billion dollar fish.
I was hoping the crowd would jump in on that, but, thank you, Mark. Yeah, fish. You'll find out. Come to the, go to one of those meetings. Who's next? Uh, let's see. Yes. Dan? Get up there and, under comments. I forgot that, I'm sorry. There weren't any commission reports, so I don't have to grill the staff. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Dan Morgan, and I reside at 2195 Cardinal Avenue.
Yeah, my name's Dan Morgan, and I reside at 2195 Cardinal Avenue here in Staton. I just have a quick question for Lance, who would probably could direct it the best. Initially, when you plan the housing development there west of the middle school, the houses that were going to run parallel with Kendall Way, the backs of those houses were going to be toward Kendall Way, and the fronts toward a street in the new development. Now that they have dug the ditch along Kendall Way, are the backs of those houses still going to be facing that ditch? And if so, is there going to be a city fence in that will keep pets and children and so forth from getting down in that ditch?
That is a private development. We have no code that requires backyard fencing. However, we are putting a fence along Kendall Way to keep people from getting into the ditch. As far as that development goes, yes, they will still have backyards facing the ditch, and more than likely, they'll be like any other development that go over to Roger Roberts, they have fences all along the backyards, but that's up to the builder. That's not up to the city to determine whether or not they put that in.
I was just curious.
And I don't have money in my budget to put a fence in, so.
Okay. I was just curious if that was discussed at all or not, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, ma'am. This is under comments from the public. We're moving along here, sort of.
Judith K. Moni, 2110 East Pine Street. I just want to say, Chief, kudos for doing the picnics in the park and letting people know about the police department. I used to be administrator of an elementary school, and we always had the police and the fire come over so that they know that you're always our friend, and to have that in our community is awesome. And the more we can get together as a community to be able to have fun and get to know each other and be able to voice our opinions about things and not go away being mad. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Okay. Anyone else under comments from the public? Yes, Paige. The regular visitors here get addressed by their first name, so.
Paige Chuk, 2088 Quail Run Avenue. I was just wanting to say that you guys have mentioned a couple times that you would like the community to be more involved and come to these meetings, and it was great to see a packed house tonight, but I feel like it might attract more people if maybe there weren't as many outbursts during the meetings. And I know that the mayor has tried really hard to keep those under control tonight, and I appreciate that, but we all have places to be and things to do, and why would we continue to come if our time is wasted by outbursts and stuff not being able to be worked on and pushed through? So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Paige, I guess. Okay, anything else? Presentations, comments? I don't have anything else this morning, or this evening. I've done enough. Business from the council, anything? Future agenda, public hearing on land use codes, public hearing, annexation of a parcel on East Virginia Street, a Shaft Road water line, and neighborhood grants. If there's nothing else, we're done.